Good evening. I'll let you know. In the time?
The clock's four minutes off in there.
What's that?
It needs to do it. Good evening. I'll let you know.
The clock's four minutes off in there.
Am I on? Okay. Anything to report out?
The City Council provided direction regarding ongoing labor negotiations as noticed on the agenda, but there's no reportable action.
Roll call.
Vice Mayor Cruz. Councilmember Mawson. Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson. Mayor Huer.
Here. Please join me in a silent prayer followed by the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Video statement.
This meeting of the GALT City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, June 22nd at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, June 23rd at 9:00 a.m. The City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website, and a DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Agenda approval additions and/or deletions. I know we have some items that are being pulled from the consent calendar. Tom, you're pulling item four.
Eight and 10.
Four, eight, and 10. Mark is pulling five.
Correct.
Staff is pulling seven.
Can I pull six?
Six.
Wouldn't it be easy to say which ones are? There's only one.
Okay.
Nothing left.
We'll start with item J4.
Unfortunately, Officer Wong's not able to be here right now, they're out on a call, so we're gonna have to postpone that for another meeting.
Okay. And new employee introduction, Jasper Wong.
That's it, please, officer. That's who.
Well, he's already been sworn in, it was a very nice swearing in. Okay, presentations. GALT Youth Commission, student member appointments, and administering the oath of office. Pina?
Where's Winkler?
There you go.
It's green now.
Go ahead and try again. I think it's on.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The recommended action is to accept the student member appointment selected by the GALT Youth Commission adult mentors. Per the GALT Municipal Code, Section 2.85.050, the student member shall be interviewed by the adult members of the commission. Each student member shall be submitted for acceptance by the City Council and serve for a two-year term commencing June 1st and ending May 31st. The five selected applications are on the back of your agenda report. And do you have any questions?
Oh, you need a motion? Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the student member appointments? So moved. Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. All the roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz. Councilmember Mawson. Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Lamson. Mayor Huer.
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote.
Thank you. So can we have the youth commission student members come up?
So we have Jamie Martin. Carla Ramos. I'm getting this right. Ashley Rivas. And Helen. I'm not su— it's a copy and I can't read it. Tell me your name, Hallie. Oh, Halen Stellens.
And Cody cannot be with us. He'll be sworn in at a later date.
Cody Wilcox. He'll be sworn in another date?
Yes, next week. So go ahead and raise your right hand. And repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. That I will support and defend. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies. Foreign and domestic. That I will bear true faith and allegiance. To the Constitution of the United States. And to the Constitution of the State of California. That I take this obligation freely. Without any mental reservation. Or purpose of evasion. And during such time. As I am a student member. Of the GALT Youth Commission. I will faithfully discharge. The duties of commission member. According to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, Police Department Annual Report presentation, Chief.
So the reason why I was smiling and stepping back is because we're gonna time this to see how long it takes. I won't reveal how long I'm supposed to take. Anyway, ready, go. Mayor Huer and councilmembers, this evening I'm happy to present the GALT Police Department Annual Report for 2017. This report includes information explaining the day-to-day activities and the accomplishments of the GALT Police Department during the calendar year 2017. Specifically, you'll find sections regarding this agency's recognition of sworn and non-sworn employees, crime statistics, activities of individual units, and retirements. I'd like to also thank CSO TJ Gattati, now-retired Lieutenant Diedrickson, and newly-promoted Lieutenant Rick Small, who produced the final report. Little history on the report, this is, my understanding, this is the first time GALT Police Department has done an annual report, and this will be prepared every single year going forward. Starts off with the city of GALT is incorporated in 1946, it's a growing community with over 25,000 residents. GALT is a family-friendly city with affordable housing and a small-town atmosphere, and we enjoy a great opportunity, a great quality of life with our sports and recreation programs, community events, and our market. So we're a full-service police department. When we're fully staffed, we have one police chief, two lieutenants, six sergeants, one records dispatch supervisor, one professional standards officer, one administrative assistant, 29 police officers, 13 professional staff, and a half parking enforcement officer. In 2017, our command staff was consisted of myself, Lieutenant Diedrickson, and Lieutenant Kowalski. Sorry. Our mission at GALT are, we are committed to building a professional organization through leadership, trust, honesty, communications, support of one another, and our vision is public trust through professional services, which every single day we try to live by. Our values are fairness, integrity, respect, and service, those are what we came up with collectively as a group, as are our values within our police department. And our goals is to prove equality of life for everyone, to strive for continuous improvement and efficiency and effectiveness, and ensure accountability to the highest standard. And everybody that lives in GALT knows that we really emphasize our community policing philosophy. So one of the backbone of any police organization is the patrol division. So when the community calls for a 911 call, they want a patrol officer to be there 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. It's one of my commitments here, regardless of what our staffing is, we will always have our patrol staffing filled. But one of the greatest things about GALT, regardless of what's going on with the national narrative, is our proactive policing. We spend a great deal of time enforcing laws, but also we do a lot of essential contacts, enforcement contacts, extra patrols, and security checks. So about 47% of our calls for service are self-initiated, which equates to 14,778 calls for service that were initiated by the officers and/or our staff. So parking and traffic enforcement, two very key pieces, the number-one complaint in any city is always traffic, and so when we have our full deployment, we'll have two traffic officers and a part-time park enforcement officer. And then this slide shows our statistics over the last three years, so shows our collisions and shows our citations, and you can see that our citations are down. A lot of that has to do with the fact that our two traffic officers, one left for another city, and the other one has been injured for quite some time, so we only have about half a year of traffic enforcement for the last year. Just kind of a graph for the graph, folks, I know that there's many ways that people look at and appreciate the information, so there are some graphs throughout here, but I'm not gonna talk about them because all that was in the previous slide. So our school resource officer program, we have two full-time school resource officers, one is assigned to the high school in Liberty Ranch, and the other is primarily out of McCaffrey. And, but they do respond to calls to all of our schools within our, within our city limits. Okay, so the GALT Police Department, believe it or not, we actually have a SWAT team and a hostage negotiation team, I say believe it or not because we haven't had anybody on our SWAT team for quite some time, but we contract and have a joint team with Elk Grove, so if we ever need them, they will respond. I would assume with some of these young folks that we're hiring right now, that... I would assume with some of these young folks that we're hiring right now, that they're probably going to be interested in that. So hopefully we'll have the SWAT team positions filled. But we do have a full component with two hostage negotiators, and they were deployed 10 times last year for various situations. All right, community service. Community service is a very important part of what we do, and that's another piece of our community-oriented policing. So it's not just TJ, we have a whole bunch of us that participate. But TJ is the main, TJ Gattati, he's the main piece, and he does a lot of regional neighborhood watch meetings, our business watch meetings, National Night Out, which is coming up, a Christmas drive, and our DEA drug takeback. Also within there, TJ also works with our graffiti abatement. And so our numbers are a little down from 16 to 17. But in 2017, we had 139 cases of graffiti, whether that's people calling in, putting on tip 411, GALT Connect, what have you, or we witnessed it ourselves. And that cost about $30,000 for removal. But that's one of the beauties of GALT is that you don't see a lot of graffiti around our cities where other towns, they just leave them up for long periods of time. But we have about a two-hour to 24-hour turnaround on most of our graffiti calls. Next is our canine. We, at full deployment, we have two canine. Halfway through the year, both of our canine, one dog retired, and the officer's still here. And then the other handler went to another agency, and his dog was old enough to retire. So currently, or halfway through the year, we didn't have one. Great thing is this year, we have one in training, and we should have another one go into training soon. But despite that, they still were deployed over 37 times per half of that year. Our explorer program, great program for 14- to 21-year-olds. We have a rigorous program training them about law enforcement. It's a great program, and they also participate in a number of events throughout the city, to include Tiny Smiles Run, the GALT High School Zombie Run, Kevin Ton Memorial, the Independence Day Parade, Liberty Ranch Homecoming and Lighting of the Night Parade. All right, our field training program. Field training program, anytime you hire new people, you have to have people to train them to become cops. The interesting thing is that in order to become a certified police officer, you have to go through the academy, which is six months long, or the extended one is 10 months long. You get hired on, and then you have to go through at least 400 hours of training. And then following that, you have to finish your probation, which is 18 months. And then and only then do you get your certification to be a police officer. So it's about a two, two-and-a-half-year process to get certified. Last year, we trained five, and we had 2,225 hours of training for our new folks. Our support services, support services, the primary function is to provide operational support to the operations and the patrol people. So that's criminal investigations, our records, communications, which is our dispatch, our property and evidence in our CAPS program. So our investigation unit, they handled over 387 cases, and they had a 68% closure rate, which is phenomenal for any police agency. The average is about 33%, but we far exceeded that. Our detectives follow most cases all the way through. The one that I like to talk about when everybody asks, is everybody's familiar with the creepy clown thing that was going around about a year, year and a half ago? The one we had in GALT, we found out who that was. Most departments can't figure it out, but we tracked that all the way down, you know, just, that's the kind of attention to detail. We had handled a lot bigger cases, but that's just one that everybody's aware of because it made the national news, not for us, but that phenomenon. So our investigations unit hired, handled some pretty unique cases. I'm not going to read this entire slide, but the shootings and the marijuana grows seem to be the biggest ones that we handled over 2017. Our records, our records unit, those are the two ladies that are up front when somebody comes in the lobby. But they also do more than that. They handle quite a few items every single day. It's two full-time people. The supervisor for records also supervises dispatch. And they are a key piece to our organization. Without them, all that paperwork, all those reports, everything that has to go up to District Attorney's Office wouldn't get accomplished. And then our communications, those are our dispatchers. So total calls for 2017, 38,991 calls. That's 6,562 911 calls coming into our dispatch center alone. I'm proud to say that we're fully staffed in dispatch, and they are just doing an amazing job. And then our property and evidence. Property and evidence, everything that gets booked in has to be stored for a period of time based on the law. As an example, if it's a homicide, they have to keep it for 99 years, which means they keep it forever. Some items have to be kept for five years, 10 years. At the dispo of the call, or the dispo of the case, you know, the judge could say, you can get rid of the evidence. It's a constant flow of paperwork, and the attention to detail is key. One thing that we did do is we had a DOJ audit, and we actually got an A on our audit, which is the highest rating you can get. And so Lynn Hutchinson, who just recently retired, she's just doing a phenomenal job in there. And then our CAPS program, we see them all over the city, but they're just an amazing group of men and women. And it's folks that are over 50 that volunteer their time. And quite frankly, without them, we wouldn't be able to accomplish some of the things that we do. Specifically, the stuff they do in the schools, and then they come out whenever we have a critical incident. But the other thing is that all of our special events, the CAPS are all there. They do that free of charge to the city. They volunteer. And as far as I'm concerned, they're a piece of our family, and they get treated as equals in our department. Only, they're just a phenomenal group of people. So these are some of the events that they participated in. And our Grandma Cop program, I like to highlight that. That has made national publications for the efforts that they've done for that program. And I see it. I'll be out with one of the Grandma Cops, and the kids will all run up and say, Grandma Cop. They don't say hi to me, and I'm in full uniform. They come up to the Grandma Cops and want to shake Grandma Cop's hand. So the impact they're making with our community is incredible. They've, in 2017, they had 5,558 volunteer hours. So illegal camping, we get this call all the time. You ask me on any given day how many illegal campers, homeless, that we have. I'll tell you, we have 12. That fluctuates all the time, depends on what's happening. If the county is driving them out of the county, or they're making a hike from Elk Grove. So, but on average, we try to keep a count, and we know that there's at least 12 in our city. But we've taken tremendous efforts by posting signs on the private property along the river, which is all private property. Whenever we notice something, we have, it gets cleaned up immediately. And as of today, I know I'm talking about 17, but current information is the riverfront was walked today from 99 all the way down to the bike trails, and there was one camp. So our efforts are paying off. All right, so 2017, we have our of the years, as I like to say. It's important to recognize your staff. It's always important to recognize the people that are doing the right things, doing a good thing for your community and for the department. And so these are our distinguished awardees. We have our ceremony every December of every year to recognize the new ones, so we'll be doing the same thing this year. We had two retirements. Lee Benson retired in February, and Steve DeNeer retired in April of this year. Steve DeNeer, 28 years, I believe, of service to the GALT community. And sadly, in 2017, we lost James Fred Jackson. The guy was amazing. He's an incredible asset to the department. And a lot of the cops didn't even know that way back in the day, before most of our department was born, he was a reserve cop of the City of GALT. So he's sorely missed in our department. All right, so professional standards. Our professional standards is a program that we went full-time in the last two years. And he does so many things. He tracks and processes citizen complaints, recruit, does recruit testing for police officers, does pre-employment screening, background investigations, handles internal affairs investigations, does all of our policy management. He does our department personnel and training, and participates in custodian of the records for our PITCHES motions. And that's when police officer files head off to court and have to be examined. So this is the meat and potatoes of the, this is one of the pieces of, the main piece of the presentation, is the complaints. So we have to check. We have to be out there checking to make sure that we're doing our job. And when a complaint comes in, we have to investigate it to the fullest extent that we can. And so in 2017, we had a total of 19 complaints. Nine of those were external, and nine of those were internal. So we're actually paying attention to what's going on inside of the department, and we're investigating all the complaints that came in. And of that, you can see, from the external complaints, we had one sustained, two unfounded, one was frivolous, and then the next one, there's five exonerated. And the internal complaints, there were nine sustained complaints, and we did have an anonymous that came in that was exonerated also. And then under the use of force, we're going to get into some of the statistics in just a little bit. But under use of force, we had 21 cases of use of force involving 49 officers. And these are the reasons why the use of force was used. Either they're fleeing or fighting, they're grabbing at the officer, they're kicking the officers, they're pulling away, they're spitting on the officers, or they're hitting the officer. So, I mean, it's a variety of reasons why force was used. And we did have one minor traffic accident in 2017 while on duty. That was me. Just to see if anybody's paying attention, that was actually me that time. And then again, these are the graphs to show the different things, if you're one of those folks that like the visual graphs there. All right. So I told you before that we had 31,163 incidences, calls for service. And of that, of those calls, we took 361 adults to jail and 30 juveniles to juvenile hall. I say to jail because we made a whole lot of other arrests that are citable, and we cited them in the field. But these are the folks that we took to jail. And so if you look at that, based on the number of incidences, based on our complaints, it's .02%, 029% of all the calls for service they have led to a complaint. That's a phenomenal statistic to show that we're not, not everybody's complaining about the cops and the job that we're doing. And if you take that same statistic and basically the number of arrests, only 2.49% of the people that actually went to jail complained about the care and treatment that they had while they're in our custody. So again, same statistics, same number of bookings. You look at that, and there's 21 uses of force out of those 31,000 incidences. And so for every contact we make, the incidence is .06% of the time that force has to be used. That's an extremely low number. And if you look at the national narrative, they're saying that everyone is getting, you know, there's always these use of forces, there's always issues with the cops. Well, this statistic shows that that's just not the case, and that's not unusual for most police agencies. All right, and our crime statistics. So this is the last year, last three years of our DOJ crime statistics that we reported to the Department of Justice. And so it's based on our total calls, and then our felony arrests and our misdemeanor arrests. And there's some fluctuation there, and some differences in the statistics, and we'll get into that in just a second. There's those graphs again. So uniform crime reporting. So our violent crimes has gone up from 76 to 91 from 2016 to 2017. Depends on what periodically you read. You'll hear this time and time again, that that's happening throughout the State of California. And there's some bail initiative, I mean, some initiatives to allow prisoners out of custody early or not going to jail at all. And they're equating that, Prop 47, Prop 57, AV 109. They're equating all of those statistics to that. For us specifically, I wanted to look at why. And as far as the aggravated assaults, which is the biggest jump from 57 to 72, we had a drastic increase in our domestic violence calls for service. And so those domestic violence, which turned out to be a felony assault on the spouse. So that's the biggest jump that we had. And then we did have a case where somebody pulled a gun at a community park on nine individuals. So when you're talking about total aggravated assaults, when you look at the total number, that one incident had nine victims, which raised that number up nine. So those are the two biggest changes from 2016 to 2017. And then you'll also see that our vehicle thefts have gone up. That's been a steady rise throughout the State of California. So, and only one can theorize as to why those numbers are going up. But we do pretty well on the vehicle thefts, and for some reason, 2017, we had a spike. But we still don't know why yet, because most of them are stolen out of here and taken to another city. So. And then our community outreach. We have a great community outreach program. We're committed to making sure that we are out in our community and spending time with our community, and our faith-based groups and other organizations. Our officers are out there all the time, whether they're in patrol cars and stopping to meet people, or it's a planned event. We take pride in our community, and we serve, and you can see it every single day in the way the officers interact and the positive information that come in. You know, I show the statistics about the complaints that came in. I probably had about 40 compliments coming into the department, and only nine external complaints. So we do a lot in our community. We have the National Night Out, Coffee with a Cop, the holiday parades, Fourth of July parades. But that's only a small segment of the big things that we're doing every single day. We did a Tip a Cop in 2017. That middle picture up there, for Law Enforcement Appreciation Day, to honor Officer Kevin Ton, we were invited to the AT&amp;T Park to participate in that. And I was able to stand, that's home plate right there, I was able to stand out there and honor him. So just absolutely amazing. Participated in the Police vs. Fire volleyball tournament. We didn't win, but we're going to do it again this year. And then this is our National Night Out and one of our Coffee with a Cop events. Special Olympics Torch Run, which, this is a picture from 17. We're going to do it again this Friday. And then the Santa Toy Drive is there, too. So we did some great things, but we also internally within the department, we spent a great deal of time working on how we can make life better for the employees within the department. So we got a new scheduling software. We developed a succession plan and a training plan for our department. And in 2018, these are some of the initiatives that we have. To get a new auto logger that's through the dispatch, so everything, every call that comes in, we'll be able to record them. We do that now, but ours is old, so we need to update that. Text to 911, our range improvements at our gun range. And then we're getting new rifles and less lethal weapons for the patrol officers. And that's it. That is my whole presentation. How did I do, Jean? Did I do under 10? Not even close? Bet if I cut all the "uh's" out of it, I probably would have made it.
Almost 23.
23 minutes. I owe Jean lunch.
All of us.
Couple lunches.
So anyway, Mayor and council, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. I want, you hired five. How many, we had two retire, then how many others left?
I don't know how many left. That wasn't in the report. I didn't look that number up.
And then one on this Kurt mentioned, should the corporals be on here?
That's just a short breakdown. I mean, we could have made that a much bigger slide with a lot more layers to it.
How many corporals do we have?
We're authorized six, we have three.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief. Great job.
Where would you like to go, Jean?
Public comment?
I do not have any.
Any public comment? Seeing none? Ms. Daley?
I just had a, oh, Sherri Daley, I live in this city. Just had a question about the number of police officers that we have. Is it going, I know our population is growing, and we're having trouble recruiting officers. So are we keeping the same number of officers per population? And if we're not, is that attributing to the rise in crime?
Would you like to answer that, Chief?
So I spent a lot of time looking at other cities and their recruitment efforts. And our numbers actually, right now, like currently- to, they, uh, they're having one heck of a time recruiting officers also, and, uh, they're all short-staffed. Uh, the one I can tell you is over, the Sacramento, they have over one hundred officer openings, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's national phenomenon, people not wanting to, to come in. So, the question was, I believe, was, is, is that attributed to our, uh, crime? And I don't believe so. I think it has a lot to do with, um, the fact that what used to be a felony now is a non-bookable offense, and we write somebody a ticket and, and we send them on their way. So, I can give you an example of last night. Last night, we had somebody that was in possession of stolen property, confirmed, and that used to be a felony, and this individual's on probation, and he got a ticket and sent on his way. We took the property, of course, and returned it to the rightful owner, but, um, they were sent on their way. So, there's, the, the consequences are lessened. So, and, um, I also think that some of the aggravated assaults are, are direct relation to the fact that since you're not going to jail for being under the influence of, uh, or having the drugs in your possession, uh, more and more people are using, uh, the drugs for a prolonged period of time and never getting a chance to sober up, so there's a lot more byline encounters, uh, even against our officers. Some of those aggravated assaults actually were against our officers.
Thank you. Reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees? Oh, did you wanna read public comment statement? Sorry, wrong one.
Under Government Code Section five, five-four-nine-five-four-point-three, members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address city council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject, matter, jurisdiction of the city council, and limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the clerk.
Tom, reports by city council members on regional boards, commissions, and committees?
I have nothing on regional boards, however, I did attend a couple, um, items at our local library, uh, First Robotics two weeks ago, and, um, what, um, Kids Amateur Radio Day last Saturday. So, for summer programs, our library has a lot, you might wanna check it out.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
I have nothing.
Kurt?
Nothing.
Page?
Just attended a couple of chamber.
New businesses, it was great to see some new businesses in town. That's about it. Okay. It's been pretty quiet two weeks for me. I also attended the amateur radio kids' day, which is, was really informative.
It's a skydiver.
Skydiver, yeah. Okay, information consent calendar. So, we will start with item J four, pulled, Tom. Agreement among City of Galt, Galt Joint Union High School District and Galt Joint Union Elementary School District regarding the school resource officer program.
Just a couple of comments on this one. Um, it's a real good deal for the school districts, and this agreement on our consent calendar, we're first in line. The, both school districts also have to agree to this, so I would stay tuned and, and make sure that they, they do. There's no reason they shouldn't, and I, I believe the superintendents know it's a great deal. So, there shouldn't be a problem, but, uh, I just wanna know that we're, we're first in the bucket and it still has to be approved by both school districts. That's it.
Any further comments? Roll call vote? Oh, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Molsen, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes five-o vote. Next item, J five, subject, Galt Landscating and Lighting District's Engineers Report, intention to levy and collect assessments for fiscal year twenty-eighteen-nineteen and set public hearings.
Um, I had this brought forward because I, going, going through the agenda, I found a discrepancy both between the budget statement and the agendas, uh, numbers for us, and I had concern, and I brought that to Emily's attention, and she was able to explain that, but since this is public money, I thought it'd be appropriate for the public to know as well how that conversation went about.
Excuse me, I'm glad to discuss that. Am I on? Yes. So, and in the staff report, there is a table in the staff report that shows the, um, projected expenditures, revenues, and net proceeds for the three L and L districts. The net proceeds amounts that are listed there agree to Schedule Four of the budget. Now, let me show you, explain to you how that is. Let's take Northeast L and L, for example. The net proceeds there are a hundred and, uh, negative one-seventy-two-oh-twenty-eight, and that consists of, if you look at Schedule Four, the change in fund balance plus the deferred maintenance. So, the change in fund balance was one-sixty-nine-oh-oh-one, and the deferred maintenance was three thousand twenty-seven, and together that adds up to the one-seventy-two-oh-twenty-eight. The other thing that Mr. Cruz, uh, Councilmember Cruz was asking me about was the detail pages in the, uh, in the budget, and wondering why the detail pages don't have the same total as the Schedule Four, and the, the difference there is that the detail pages do not include the transfers out. So, if we look once again at the, um, Northeast Lighting and Landscaping District, on the detail page, it shows appropriations of five-hundred-seventy-one-thousand-three-hundred-sixty-seven dollars. If you look at Schedule Four, you'll see that there's a transfer out of seventy-nine-thousand-four-hundred-and-eighteen for a total of six-hundred-fifty-seven-eighty-five, which is the amount reported in the staff report and on Schedule Four as the total expenditures.
Thank you. With that, I'll move it.
I have a public comment. Let's take a public comment. Sean Farmer?
My name is Sean Farmer, and I'm here this evening as a concerned citizen. I wanted to speak briefly about this topic because, for those that may have not seen this, lighting and landscape districts are basically what I would consider like an HOA for the city. People that own property in town are assessed costs that are then used for maintenance on parks and, uh, roadways and all public areas that are not taken care of by property owners and businesses and such. You know, about two-hundred-and-forty years ago, our forefathers left this country to escape many things, one of them was taxation. It seems like we've all kinda forgotten that, and here we are, two-hundred-and-forty-two years later, we've kind of continually, our societies keep adding, you know, this tax burden on to our citizens, we're kinda back where we started from, so it's, uh, you know, taxes are a way of life, I, I agree with that, we all understand that, it's just, it's just what we have to do. But, um, you know, our residents are assessed these fees we pay for. I live in a subdivision, as well as I believe Councilman Campion lives in the same subdivision, we pay two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars, we're one of the highest that we pay. And, you know, I, I think all of us as taxpayers just wanna see where our money goes, and I read the description of what this money does, and some of it, I'm sure, I don't see. But, what I can see is things, such as, things that are common knowledge, like Mr. Solis, um, his report a couple of months back is the disrepair of our parks, all these things. My question is, what is the money that we've been paying all this time doing, because we don't see a lot going off our money? Like weed abatement, for example, is a big deal that I've raised to some of the department heads. There's weed abatement issues in the city that I don't feel the city has been doing a good job, um, we had to speak up about it, they've done a better job at doing that. So, when I read the description of what these LLCs do, I look at that and say, okay, now we're being asked for more money to do these things that I felt haven't been doing a good job. Now, what you might say to me is, well, that's why we need more money. But what I say is that I'm, I'm not gonna sit here and argue that our parks are in disrepair and that our, our Parks and Recreation, um, department is underfunded, I'll be the first one to say it, it needs more money. Our, our finance director said herself, we're very lucky to have the market, that only has to chip in twenty-four, or the general fund that only has to chip in twenty-four percent, 'cause the market covers the rest. We should be funding more of Parks and Rec out of the general fund, but instead of doing that and looking for ways to do that, we just wanna go to the taxpayers and say, hey, can you guys pay a little bit more on your, on your property taxes so we can take care of these parks and all these things that are being taken care of? And, you know, I want our city to look nice, it's, it's something that I, I am very passionate about. I was in Oakland yesterday, I went to San Francisco for a baseball game, and I was going through Oakland on the BART, and looking out the window, and it's just like, I mean, you just look at the window, just complete, looks like a landfill. And I look, I think to myself, I would never wanna see Galt look like that, it's just, it's just a travesty, it's like they've just given up. I don't ever want a Galt to look like that. So, part of taking care of Galt is obviously these districts that we have and, and these, these funds we raise to try to keep Galt clean and maintain everything, but I also see what some of the citizens have come to me lately in the last couple of days and say, well, why are they asking us for more money on our taxes to pay for these things when we had enough money to put eight-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars extra in the reserve fund, which is pretty much almost five years worth of the deficit that you have, the one-hundred-and-seventy-seven-thousand, or one-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand dollars in deficit, these lighting and landscape district are gonna come up short, that's almost five years worth of that. So, we can do that, and we can hand out raises, which are still kind of in people's memories, but we have to then go back to the taxpayer and say, hey, can you guys give us more money so we can take care of our parks and everything? I mean, we are already paying as taxpayers into these departments that pay for these maintenance of these things. I, I just want to see, I see, um, the two biggest costs in the Northeast District is personnel and professional services, a hundred-and-sixty-some-thousand for one, a hundred-and-sixty-some-thousand for the other. I look at that and I think, well, what's the breakdown of that? What are those services? One of them says the hiring of contract, contractors to do X, Y, Z, the other says staff. So, you look at both, it's like, well, they're doing the same thing? It, to me, it looks very admin-heavy, so when we're asked to pay more money, I wanna see where that money's going, I wanna see, I wanna see weeds taken care of, I wanna see things that the citizen can actually see something taking place. Anytime that the citizens are asked to pay more money, it's very important that you as council members, as representatives of us, think very hard about this, because we don't wanna be too quick to pass on costs to taxpayers, they're being asked more and more, water rates, you name it, people are upset about costs going up on everything. So, please consider all that when you guys decide to do stuff like this. Thank you.
City manager? Gene, do you have any comments?
I, I would like to say, and I'd like to invite Mr. Farmer or anyone who has those concerns to sit down with city staff, I'd be happy to sit down with you myself. Many of the statements that you just made are not factual, and I'd be really happy to help educate you on, on what the, what the information is, so, thank you for your comments.
I'll, I'll reach out to Mr. Farmer if you'd like to sit down.
Thank you.
And discuss that, we can.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Comments by sta- hi, council? I have a motion by Councilmember Vice Mayor Cruz, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Counsel, motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Molsen, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes five-o vote. Item six, Award of Contract Amendment Number Three for Consultant Services for Waste Water Treatment Plant Optimization. Councilmember Lamson?
Sorry, Mark. Um, so, I'd just like to get some things on, um, public record, we started out with a twenty-four-thousand consultant fee, um, and so can you explain a little bit what, um, continued optimization services are, and if you plan on using the whole forty-six, or is that just as it comes up, and why we still need the consultant out there?
Thank you. My green light is on.
The other green light is now on.
Ex- engineer.
Planner. The plant, the plant came online about two years ago after we, we started the, uh, we start up all the new processes and everything in the plant. And at that time, uh, or, the plant is a real complicated plant, it's got a lot of new features to it, it's, the process is really touchy, and, you know, it's just part of the system that comes with it. We had, uh, initially, when we, when we went through this process, we brought on, um, Dan Cordnovis, who was part of the original startup. He was under contract with West Yost to be, of the design and the project management group, um, to help us start up the plant. We decided to have him be a little longer on that because we were short-staffed. Um, and as time went on, I kinda moved into another position over the next couple of months, moved in another position, my time was limited to do the process control and such, and then, um, Dan was utilized to take up my time, but we have never been fully staffed, we've been down one, two, or three operators continuously during this next, uh, during the last two-year period. Dan has helped us do training, he's helped us keep, uh, the process control going on, we, he reviews all of the process logs, he usually comes in anywhere from three to four hours a week, and we're looking at to continue that through this, uh, period that we have still understaffed and under, uh, under operating, uh, certification. We are now a, uh, class-four plant, which was, uh, designated back in December, we didn't anticipate that. Well, state changes their mind here and there, we've been a class-three plant, even during the startup, for the first two years, we were class-three, but, uh, but they decided to re-register us or recertify us as a class-four. So, now we've gotta bring operators up to that level, we're, we are well under-certified, and we're just doing all we can, and this position helps to do that, it helps to train, helps review the process control, helps review the, the, the plant on a weekly basis, and, uh, we hope one day to get away from that, but we're hoping it comes sooner than later. That's where we're at.
So, we're having trouble hiring and training?
Why do we have staff shortage?
We, um, we can hire them, we can't keep them.
Okay.
As soon as they get certified, they're gone. Uh, Dan, just in the last two years, about five operators.
To larger water districts, to larger waste, to larger plants?
Well, just down the street, Sacramento Regional, Moston, that's right down the street.
Thank you.
I had an opportunity just recently to tour the plant with, um, Winkler, and it is a extremely complex chemistry project, and that's what these operators are certified. And if we lose the balance of how that plant operates, I think it would take upwards of two weeks to get it running again. What would happen? You know, what would you do in those two weeks? Just think about it, okay? So, it, it's extremely complex, and you've gotta have the expertise, and until we have operators that stay around long enough and trained long enough, we're going, they need to have that expertise.
So, Mark, do you think they leave to go to the other district because of the wage issue?
Number-one issue, that's what they tell us, uh, when they leave, so.
That's what I hear, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Molsen, roll call vote?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Hewer?
Aye. Motion passes five-o vote. Item number seven was pulled by staff.
Mr. Clarkson?
We would like to.
Appropriation of SB one maintenance and rehabilitation funds, and year-end fund transfer to balance the gas tax maintenance fund. There we go.
We would like to pull it and bring it back at another council meeting, make some adjustments to it.
And the reason?
We, the SB one people are not, uh, completed on their project, uh, well, on the allocation of that, we don't really know what the allocation, it can be upwards of a hundred and fifty, we're not sure, we should know within the next couple of weeks on what that allocation will be, they, they've just been running all kinds of numbers, and we would like to bring it back to you one time and, and make sure we don't have to come back, so.
My understanding is we're anticipating an increase in the revenue?
Yes.
And there's, there's no time-sensitive issue with this?
Not at this time. Our contractor, the SB one money that we're looking for funding is on the SRTS project, the project that you see currently out there right now, and we anticipate several more progress payments into at least August and possibly September, so we can, we could do a, um, uh, the claim at that time.
Thank you.
Reason I ask is because it's going to be a while for the next council meeting.
Any further questions, comments? Do I have a motion?
Nope, no motion required.
Oh, it was pulled, thank you. Okay, item number eight, um, pool, approval of Project and Expenditure Plan and Transportation Development Act claim for fiscal year twenty-eighteen-nineteen, Mark?
He didn't pull it, I did.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The only reason I pulled it is going through the staff report, if you get to page two-eighty-two, I- under alternatives, it says, "Council could also require that any amendments to the TDA claim be brought back for council approval." That kind of sounds like, you know, do we want to do that? I, I think that's almost standard operating procedure, isn't it? You know, if there's amendments or something like that, it'll be brought back, a consent item or something like that.
It will be.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted that for clarification, that's all. With that, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Mollson, second by Councilmember Lamson. Any further comments? Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Aye. Motion passes, five oh vote. Okay, item number ten, consider opposition to propose drinking water tax. Tom?
Oh, I pulled that one too, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
Okay, having twice testified, that's what they call it in public comment when you go to the water board, they call it testifying, having done that twice in front of the water board, particularly on water rates to our citizens, I mean, costs we brought up tonight on that, and pretty much being tossed out of the meeting both times. On retrospect, I, I can understand that the, the water board was as frustrated as I was and you are, I'm sure, because they had as much control over the rates as we do. However, with the drinking water tax, this would basically turn our city into a tax collector for the state. So, yeah, I'm opposed to it, so I'd like to make that comment.
I know for me, one of the real issues is that we have spent, and our citizens, all of us are paying.
A lot of money.
Have spent a lot of money on, on improving our drinking water.
Yes.
Putting in two new wells, upgrading our plants, doing all of these things, and our citizens are paying for it, and now this is asking our community to now help pay for other communities that haven't brought their water up.
And the state requires us to do that. And now they're trying to require us to tax you on top of it. It, it's just, can't agree with it.
Well, not only are they taxing you for it, they're taxing you so that they can pay to have the others brought up to our level. That's what irks me.
My issue is that we've already done.
I think, I think our citizens have more than paid their fair share. I really do.
Okay. Further comments? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Mollson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Aye. Motion passes, five oh vote. I think that's all the pulled items.
How many are left?
Okay. Items, item one, minutes of the regular meeting of June fifth. Item two, receive and file warrants. Item three, financial records maintenance.
Ten, eleven, twelve.
Item nine, approval of the amended memorandum of understanding with Sacramento County, Sacramento area council of governments for community design grant funding for the Second Street infill project. And I think that's it.
No.
Eleven, twelve.
Leadership and communications coaching. Item twelve, approval of proposed salary range and job description for the position of human resource analyst one-two. Do I have a motion?
Move the consent.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Councilmember Mollson. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz.
Aye.
Councilmember Mollson.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Hewer.
Aye. Motion passes, five oh vote.
And that was just a consent calendar. I couldn't resist.
You couldn't resist. Okay. Regular calendar, community development department, digital freeway sign. Chris?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Chris Sorias, community development director. The item you have before you is a authorization request for proceeding with a digital freeway sign at five hundred Fairway Drive. You may know five hundred Fairway Drive is a city-owned property adjacent to the freeway, and it's currently used for Galt Market property. The site is located between Burger King and Les Schwab. Highway ninety-nine is somewhat of an obstacle for Galt. It is a physical barrier, basically separating the city and the two. However, it's also an asset to the city. Properties adjacent to the freeway are zoned highway commercial, which takes advantage of the freeway access and visibility, making it ideal for gas stations, fast food, hotels, and other businesses. Access to highway ninety-nine is also good for the industrial park. The visibility helps advertise the Galt Market. In fact, the Galt Market sign is on that site, five hundred Fairway Drive. And the visibility could be used to help generate additional income to the city by placing a freeway digital sign, and we'll get into that a little bit later in the presentation. Other cities have started taking advantage of the freeway visibility and access, allowing digital freeway signs or billboards. There have been many signs placed on highway ninety-nine the past handful of years. And if you look at the sign on the left-hand side of the screen, that's the digital reader next to Kaiser in South Sacramento. There's a similar sign like that by Cal Expo. The sign on the right in the upper right-hand corner is a digital reader at the Elk Grove Autumn Mall. And Elk Grove has been particularly aggressive in its freeway signage. In addition to the reader board, they've placed a series of static signs, and they're not necessarily billboards, but they're high signs advertising off-site businesses to take advantage of their freeway visibility. And the photo on the bottom right shows the sign at, and I wish it was a little bit closer, but that's the sign at Laguna Bond exit on ninety-nine. And I think they've done a good job with their architecture, and then this sign was kind of cool. It has that elk on top, and actually becomes a landmark for the city in a way. So to help capitalize on this highway ninety-nine visibility, staff hired terror advisors to evaluate possible locations for placing a digital freeway sign, and the city property at five hundred Fairway Drive proved to be the best location. The property has good visibility from both northbound and southbound travel, and the photo on the left shows a southbound travel, which is outstanding. I mean, you probably couldn't get better visibility. On the northbound, you do have some obstruction with the oleanders, but anything higher than twenty-five feet probably is going to have pretty good visibility on northbound travel as well. And the city's been contemplating putting a sign on this location for quite some time. In fact, there used to be a billboard located on this property, and I think it was removed about ten years ago or so. So at this point, as a, you know, I said, I stated before, staff hired terror advisors to evaluate those possible sign locations, and they completed what we call the site assessment for Galt, which was included in the staff report package. And Scott Sheldon with terror advisors is going to provide a review of that assessment and recommended next steps. And I think he'll also talk about possible income potential for the city with placing that sign. Scott has been working with many cities in the state for these digital sign placements, and has become somewhat of an expert on the issue. So at this point, I'd like to call up Scott and have him kind of walk you through the
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. My name is Scott Sheldon, and I'm the president of Terra Realty Advisors. What we are, their company, is a full-service real estate advisory firm, basically for public agencies. We do about half of our practice down in the Los Angeles area. The balance of it is up in Northern California, and we deal primarily with the school districts. We do work for about thirty-five school districts. We also do work for a lot of cities, counties, federal and special agencies, all with real estate work. One of our kind of subspecialties, which has always been of interest to me, has been the billboard proposals and capacity to be able to generate revenue for different public agencies. We've been doing this for about twenty years now, all for public agencies, mostly cities, but then we are also doing some for school districts down in LA, and we've done some for special agencies up here in Northern California. Water agencies for one. And anybody that has particular properties that are highly visible and that would be able to generate those kinds of revenues, because there's a fairly significant capital cost that goes along with constructing these for the operator, not for the agency or the landowner. So what we did, we were engaged by Chris and, and the city to go and do a study, which we've done a lot of, and, and take a look at what the potential might be with all of the different layers that go along with getting them. These are not easy to get, because not only does it have to be approved through the local agency, but it also has to be approved through the state, Caltrans. And there are a lot of layers that go along with that. There's bonus segments of the freeway. There's landscape segments of the freeway. There are spacing issues that go along. You can't have signs more than five hundred feet close, and if it's digital, it's got to be a thousand feet. So there's a lot of different things that go along with that, and then also the physical terrain characteristics that happen. Can you see it? There's a lot of people you see in a flat dimension, you know, hey, it looks great, and then you go out and drive it, and you see, can't see it. So there, there's a lot of different things. In fact, we just completed a study for the city of El Monte down in Southern California, and they're going through a fairly significant widening of the I-five down there. And LA is kind of the sign capital of California. You've got to go to Las Vegas or Phoenix to really kind of beat LA. So, and there is a lot of work down there for that. But the, you know, with all of that stuff, I mean, it turns out that they have about three sites that might be viable. Again, when we came here and we did a study along ninety-nine, we, there was three sites that we were focused on, and out of those, because of either landscape freeway designation, which does not, Caltrans does not allow signs in, in that landscape freeway unless you go through a relocation process, which is painful and expensive. We found the one at the freeway drive that really seemed to make a lot of sense. And there was, as Chris mentioned, there was a sign there. It was an out-front sign. I know those guys very well, and they're, they're very aware that their sign got taken down. But that's, that's fine. So, anyway, we're, we, we did that study. We took a look at it. We think there's value there. In terms of the digital signs, there's not a lot of players. In Southern California, there's probably seven major players down there that deal with digital signs. In Northern California, the primary people are out-front, clear channel. Marquee is doing some, and then there's some other ones that are almost one-offs. But i-if you think about it, digital signs basically work on what is known as a click. And, and a click is every time that image changes, and that changes eight times a minute. And if you do the math on that, you have a new ad every eight seconds on two sides of a billboard, and that's a lot of ads. So in order to be in that business, that you have to have a fairly significant capacity to be able to sell that many ads. Now, the other thing that we always do in the agreements that we're putting together is include for the agency and the public entities that are there, free, free space, you know, for advertising PSAs for the community, and on, usually on a space-available basis. And they're also tied into the highway patrol for the Amber Alerts and FEMA for the national emergencies. So that's all done free. So it's basically a service to the local community, as well as people that are passing through, but it's just better advertising, better exposure. The other thing that we really like to see and do, and what we encourage cities and agencies, is to brand their city. And one of the things, if you think about that, next you, you're driving up to Sacramento or you're driving down to the Bay Area, and you see these signs, you'll see a lot of times where the city is on there, in, in terms of we are now entering into the city. And it's a branding thing. There, there's different ways that you can approach that through design, but that's something that we think is very important also. And that's one of the things that is basically provided by the sign company at no cost. So they, they construct the signs and operate the signs, and then what we always want to do is make sure that this is basically a coupon clip for the agency where you're just receiving a revenue stream. So there's different ways of doing that, structuring that. That would come out of the RFP process, but in, and typically, it's the, the city or agency or property owner would receive a minimum annual guarantee or a MAG. And then we always like to have some protection in there for percentage rent, so if the sign does very well, then the property owner or the city gets a percentage interest in that too. So those are typically how we structure those signs. Don't, there's a lot of things about the, the sign business and, and all of that. I'm happy to answer any questions, or if I didn't cover anything, I'd be happy to, to expound on that, too.
So in, in addition to that information, our next steps and what we're asking tonight is to approve the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement to hire Tara, Scott's company, to basically run the RFP process for us and actually work the application process through Caltrans. So one of the benefits of hiring Tara to do that work is they have the specialty to do that. I mean, staff, we do not, so we have to lean to that sort of specialty. In addition to that, we can recoup the cost of the contract with Scott through, you know, our RFP process with the sign company. So I think, you know, the report also talks about a potential income generator, that it talked about the dollar figure potential there. So to me, this is a good way to supplement the city's resources. Initially, I had that additional resource going to the general fund, but I was quickly corrected by our Parks and Rec director on where that money will really go. So, you know, this is, again, just something other cities are doing and taking advantage of. If the city goes in this direction, we will need to amend the zoning code to allow billboards. We currently prohibit them. And then what Scott brought to our attention is that the Caltrans application requires a commercial designation for properties.
Need a rezone.
Placed on, right. So we have to do some sort of zoning amendment to allow then that sign on five hundred Fairway Drive. But I think, you know, when we get to that point, we can craft a good policy and ordinance to make sure that we don't have a proliferation of signs, and that the signs do, that do come in, we have control over design on them. So I'm confident we can really get a nice, attractive sign. I mean, some of those that I've seen out there, I, I think, work really well, and then, you know, the income revenue is pretty good. So at this point, you know, Scott and staff will be available to answer any questions you might have.
You missed the general plan. Do we, will we require a general plan amendment?
Uh, I, I think we're good there.
Okay.
So it's just a zoning.
It'll be, it'll be an ordinance amendment and a rezone.
Correct. And what that looks like at this point, I don't know.
Yeah, but, well, my point is, there's going to be a lot of public discussion on this, us ever seeing it again, and I'm thinking planning commission.
Definitely.
Yeah, yeah. So our decision tonight is just whether or not we want to pursue it to see where it goes.
Correct.
So you had, you had mentioned anything over twenty-five feet would be able to be seen over the oleanders.
Yeah, and I took, I took, I took a stab, you know. Signs, you know, will go, will vary in height. Scott, I don't know if you know the average height of the billboard sign?
It really depends on the topography. What you want to do is you probably want to, the sign companies want it at eye level. So to the extent that, if you think about it, if you're driving or you're walking or something, anything that's eye level is going to read better. And, and again, this is all about advertising. It's all about making it a passion and selling something or having you do something. So to the, to the extent that they can, they want to keep it fairly low, but they also understand that there are things, in your case, you've got some trees there that are along the frontage road. You also have some oleander. Your cross read, which is your northbound, reading across the highway, that you have oleander there. That, those are some of the things, and, and they've gone in and actually helped cut those things down. If you go farther south, there's actually already a concrete barrier farther south, not that, not that much farther south either. So you typically want to see them at about forty, anywhere from twenty-five to fifty feet. Most of the ordinances that we've written, we max it at sixty feet. And we should, I should also mention that the size of these signs, a typical standard digital sign is twelve feet by forty-eight feet. So at twelve feet tall and forty-eight feet long.
Wow.
So you, Caltrans also regulates, you can't go more than twelve hundred square feet, and it can't be, which is basically a twenty by sixty. Not many of those out there. The ones on the Bay Bridge, at the Anchorage, if you go there, those are twenty by sixties. They're, they're more expensive. The Port of Oakland, actually, those are owned by the Port of Oakland, and, which is basically the city of Oakland, and they're generating probably about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year off of each one of those in terms of revenue. And that's been going on for ten years. So again, a lot of traffic there, and, and the, the sign companies will price and value these things based on the quality of the traffic. And the quality of the traffic is the number of cars and how fast you're going. And slow is good. Not when you're driving, but slow is good when for the sign.
So basically, if we vote on this tonight, and basically approve this tonight, it's going out for an RFP to see if there really is an interest in somebody wanting to build the sign and wanting to move forward on this.
Yep.
So that piece of property is currently parking, or it's a parking lot. But it's really a pretty underutilized piece of property, isn't it, Armando? I mean, I it, Armando? I mean, I, even on flea market days, I don't ever see much parking there. I mean, it's used for the fireworks booths, but I don't.
The area that they're talking about putting it in originally had a billboard there. So you're putting it back in there. You shouldn't be removing any parking stalls at all.
Yeah. At the max, you would, you're talking about a pole that's four feet in width.
Oh, okay.
So at the, at the max that you would have is one, one loss. And again, position-
Four feet across can-
No, four foot circular, diameter.
Can hold a sign that big?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, wow. I, I thought it would be a much bigger base. I mean, that's a big sign.
No. No. Four feet, four feet's pretty standard.
See, there is advantages to only having four lanes instead of six, huh? That slows things down, unless you're driving.
So you're, so you're, you're confident, or you feel that the $100,000 a year revenue is, is in the ballpark?
Yes, based on, you know, the, again, if you're in Los Angeles, you're talking to multiple of that. And again, it depends on the quality of the traffic. Now, there's not that many signs along 99, which is good. And they're all pretty much statics until you get into Elk Grove. So the, it's going to be, you know, how much advertising can you sell? You meet all the criteria that Caltrans has in terms of businesses within 1,000 feet, where there's no spacing issues. You've got all of that. So it's really going to be dependent on, you know, the quality of the traffic that, that the sign companies see there, and, you know, what they can pay. Again, a static sign, we did a static sign for Irrigation District, and they're getting a MAG, minimum annual guarantee of $36,000 a year versus percentage rent. So that was a static sign. So that's part of the process that will go.
With this, we're getting about $100 a month for that sign on a rolling 10-year lease.
Yes.
Which was ridiculous.
Yes.
But you're not the only one. There's a lot of signs out there. And again, it depends on the, the traffic. And the digital is newer, you know, the newer technology, if you think about going to Costco, you know, the cost of TVs, you know, five, six, seven years ago for, you know, I looked at those things and go, oh my, you know, 50-inch TV, wow, that's great. No, 4,000 bucks, I think I'll wait. And, and now those TVs are like $400. And it's the same thing with these digital screens. The value of it's going down. We're getting ready, in fact, we're, we're doing one for the city of San Pablo on Interstate 80. And the entire cost of that is about $900,000. But it's a very high sign because of the elevation of the freeway and everything. And it's also a big sign. It created a really interesting sign. So if you ever drive up and down there in about a month, you'll be able to see what we did there. And, but it's, it's a 20 by 60 sign. So it's a very large sign, and it sits 100 feet in the air.
Wow.
So, because the freeway is way down. So it's, but there's a fairly significant capital investment, usually about $750,000 to do a standard one of these signs.
What's generally the term of the lease?
The term of the lease is typically 10 years with options, is what they want. They want a minimum 10-year for appreciation of the, the capital investment that they have. So we're doing, we're doing one right now. It's basically a 10-year with two 10-year options. It's pretty standard. Usually 10-year with a 10-year, 10-year with two 10-year options.
Is there inflators in there and within the-
Well, we always raise the MAG. You're going to have all this great knowledge here about acronyms. But we also always want to see a percentage rent. So as the market goes up, you're really more protected with that even than with a CPI increase that you might get.
Okay.
So in the RFP, or in the structure of it, do you ever give maybe a rate reduction or something to local businesses? I mean, if we put up a sign, I'd really like it to be utilized to, I mean, I know it's going to advertise businesses that are outside of town, and, but that we give some sort, sort of way to prioritize our local businesses, whether they're our hotels, or, because those are the things that, that besides the $100,000 it, it potentially could generate in the sign, it also generates for the community.
Have you seen that before, where you-
Yeah. Here's how it typically works in, in the, in that world. I mean, what you're doing, and you have to make a decision, what do we want to accomplish? Because anything that you do to reduce that reduces your revenue. And so the sign company is going to look at that and say, okay, well, if I want to do discounted things on that, then it's going to reduce revenue. That's something that we can clearly talk about. It's just like the, the PSAs that you do. You typically do those on a space available, and then it's no cost. So the city produces camera-ready artwork, it's digitized, you uplink it, and everything is digital now, and by wifi and everything else. So we can talk about that. It's just-
I'd like you to consider it. I just think especially for some of our larger businesses, our hotels and, and those, you know, just because it hits our, our general, I mean, our strategic plan, you know, about promoting our community.
And I had the same question about PSAs and discounts for local businesses. I think is, if we go forward with this and goes through all the process, everything else, it gets to that point, those are some of the options that we, you know, the questions that we'd be asking to see, to make that decision. Because, you know, we're not going to make it tonight, obviously.
No. And, and there's, and there's lots of nuances. It's always fun arguing over money when you, when you got the money, isn't it? So, but one of the things that we've done also, in, in terms of how you can structure these things, is you, again, if, if the goal is to generate revenue, you can take and allocate a portion of that revenue to a pool where then people can, you know, use that pool basically to pay for part of their ads. And you can do that through, you used to be able to do that through RDAs, but now either through chambers or whatever, where you can take and allocate that, and then can, kind of control some of that, where you maximize your revenue and you're controlling kind of how that's, how that's working from the ad side. And again, I'm not saying that you do that. I'm just saying that there's lots of different ways of looking at those kinds of things.
I mean, I'd look, of course, we all want to increase revenue, but it also increases exposure. I mean, I think if we go to this kind, I'm not a sign person. I particularly don't like signs, a lot of signs. I, I find them sometimes to be, you know, all this, signs for everything just drive me nuts. So, so if we, you know, I mean, I understand we're just going for the RFP to see if there's an interest out there. But if we head in that direction, I'd really like to see some way that it, it really benefit our community. $100,000, of course, would benefit our community. But, but to benefit our community in general and, and some of the businesses in our community.
Certainly, yeah.
We'd have to consider, on the east side, we have a potential housing development and everything else. Now, that's, there's a distance between these signs and where you can have residential. And that, we'd probably have to look at that. But that would go along with, with the noise from the freeway, too.
Right. Yeah, that's correct. In fact, I think the site assessment talked about the site for 500 Fairway Drive and then the proximity to homes nearby. So they did address that in that study, and it will be looked at.
Yes.
There, there are lighting studies that are done. There's a very famous study done by a gentleman by the name of Daniel Lewin, which Caltrans has bought into. And, and again, LED light is a lot different than what your typical fluorescent light is. And these actually, all of them actually angle the, the light down. So it's not going out. First of all, it's internal. It's not being blasted and then reflected. And it's actually being tilted down. But the, you know, again, physics lesson, typically what they do is run at .3-foot candles over ambient light. So that is dialed down in the evening. So it is not as strong, obviously, because you don't need it during the day. You need more light to be able to counterbalance the ambient light. But the technology on these things is, is not bad.
It's a dark-
In fact, it's better than a regular sign.
The dark sky principle.
Right.
You know, where you put, you put the light where you want it, and up where, you know, the Martians can look at it, which, you know-
No, you're, you're pointing it down because that's your customer, going on the information highway, by the way.
Any further questions from council?
Yes. I noted in the report, you had noted 79,000 cars per day. Is that in both directions? And how was that determined?
Yeah, that, that's Caltrans. That, Caltrans generates that information, and it's 79,000 in both directions.
Do we know how that was determined? I mean, obviously, Caltrans is one that-
Caltrans probably stuck a meter out there. I mean, Chris, maybe you can answer that.
It's not uncommon for them to put some sort of strip out, or, you know, not something that they run over. But they do have counters where they monitor traffic on the freeways. How they do that in every situation, I don't know. I know they've done cameras in some locations. I know the old school way, they would actually get counters out at times. But I can't say how Caltrans actually got that count.
They, they do that throughout the state. You can go to their website and pull that information up. And this was done in '16. So you've got, and that's actually pretty recent for Caltrans. So again, it's probably more today.
Yes, it's probably much more than that, then.
But the advertisers are going to look at that also.
A lot slower.
Yeah. Yes, it's, it's not just quantity, it's quality.
Yes.
Exactly.
And slow is quality in this case.
Slow is quality unless you're driving, and then it's not, not so good.
Not so good.
Any further questions from council? Okay. Any public comment? Go ahead. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Benjamin Wilson. This sounds great. $100,000 worth of revenue is great. My question would be what the internal rate of return is. Are we spending $750,000 today as a hard landed cost? Because if that's the case, to extrapolate that over the course of, you know, at least seven and a half years, assuming that we were getting that as net revenue. If we're getting that as gross revenue minus costs, adjusted for inflation and other offsets, it's going to end up being 12 to 15 years before the city starts to see any true net revenue coming from that and in our pockets. So I would definitely want to know what the internal rate of revenue is, because that's always the case. I mean, this is, you know, in order for us to see that return on investment, you know, 80,000 cars plus pass by it every day. As a business owner, I, I once had a, a friend who opened up a coffee shop out on Madison Avenue, and he spent $400,000 because they had to replumb the, the property. And, and they built this gorgeous drive-through. This is before Dutch Brothers and everything became popular. And he's like, Madison Avenue, this is great. Look at the demographics, and look how many cars are passing by. And I said, you can only, you know, challenge one way, because the other way is not going to flip U-turn and flip another U-turn. I'm sorry. Plus, you have direct competition right across the street, plus indirect competition, which is making a cup of coffee at home, for instance. So when you factor in all these variables, you know, the odds of a local business owner, I do run a business out of Lowdi, and we've considered putting stuff on signs. And the reason that we haven't went that direction is what is our return? We're spending X amount of dollars per month on advertising, and how much money are we returning? And so that's where the IRR is extremely important. So I definitely encourage the, the council to take a look at that before making any decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, yeah.
The sign company will pay for the sign. They will own the sign, and it will be a land lease.
There's no output from the city.
No capital.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Any further public comment? Do I have a motion, or any further discussion?
I'll move for approval, second.
Motion by Councilmember Molsen, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Call, or the roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Molsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes, 5-0 vote. Thank you. Galt Industrial Park Expansion Property Tax Exchange Agreement with Sacramento County. Chris?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Back again. The item you have before you is an update and a request for direction on a tax sharing agreement for the Galt Industrial Expansion Annexation Project. As you may recall, the city council approved the industrial annexation project in October 2017. Following that council approval, we submitted an application to LAFCO. Right around that same time, we started working with Sac County on a tax sharing agreement. And at that point, it was a pretty easy negotiation with the county because the tax sharing agreement was very similar to the Eastview Liberty Ranch tax sharing agreement, which was basically a 50-50 split of property tax. There was no sales tax or transit occupancy tax or TOT included in that agreement. And the city council approved that version in December of 2017. After that council approved the agreement, county staff prepared it for presentation to the county board. As it was making its rounds in the county, it was polled, and the item was put on hold, and a revised property tax sharing agreement was then sent to Galt for review. The revision showed a 50-50 split of the property tax that was similar to the old agreement. But it then also included a 50-50 split of future TOT, and then a 50-50 split of sales tax generated from specific uses. The uses were like car dealers, big box retailers, and then large-scale retailers on like 30 acres or more. So now, the industrial annexation area is not slated for hotels or the sales generators indicated in that agreement. So it's doubtful that the revised tax sharing agreement will apply to this annexation project. However, staff opposed this new language because we did not want to start the precedent of this tax sharing and TOT, since we have other annexations on the horizon that certainly can include those type of uses mentioned in the agreement. Staff has since been negotiating with the county in an attempt to get them to honor the original agreement showing the property tax split only. In fact, city and county staff met on the issue. County staff was apologetic regarding the revision, knowing that it kind of puts us in a bind where we've already had you approve one that they have given us. But what they stated is, is that they are negotiating other tax sharing agreements with other cities, and they wanted all their tax sharing agreements to be similar. They also stated that the other cities, as those other cities grow, they compete with the county for tax revenue. So from that meeting, staff was tasked with providing a rationale for how Galt is different than those other cities, and why should we be treated differently? And that analysis was included in the staff report. I think that was attachment three. The analysis basically showed that Galt's remote location differentiates us from the county cities like Folsom, Sacramento, and Rancho Cordova. Those cities are adjacent to highly developed county communities like Arden Arcade, Orangevale, Carmichael, just to name a few. So as those cities like Folsom and Sacramento expand, they compete with the county for population and sales tax revenue. Galt, on the other hand, were an urban suburban island and basically surrounded by county farmland. In fact, the county general plan prohibits urban and suburban uses in the county near Galt. Galt is beyond their urban services boundary. So as Galt expands our commercial base, we siphon sales tax activity away from Elk Grove and Lowdi. And as you know, Lowdi is not located in Sacramento County. So the bottom line is there were no county sales tax generators near Galt in which to compete. So we thought that was the argument in which they were looking for. When we submitted that to the county, they didn't disagree with anything that we had said. But they then focused on the cost of operating the criminal justice systems and the social system programs that remain in Galt, and the county pays for after annexation. And they felt that the 50% property tax shared did not cover those costs. So at this point, the city has a couple of options moving forward. We can agree to the revised tax sharing agreement. Since the industrial annexation is not slated to have those uses, it's doubtful that the sales tax and the TOT will apply to this project. The benefit of moving forward with the agreement would be to advance the LAFCO application for this industrial expansion project. LAFCO will not schedule the item for their board approval without a fully executed tax sharing agreement. So it's important for the annexation to actually have that completed. To the, I should say, to address the issue on future annexations, we can require them to include an analysis or fiscal study to show the cost of the county services, and then the, the projected property tax revenue to see where the shortcomings may be. The downside of agreeing to that tax sharing agreement at this point is, again, setting the precedent and then making it more difficult to negotiate those sales tax and TOT items in the future. Another option could be to continue to oppose the transit occupancy tax and the sales tax split. We can do that by applying pressure on the county by speaking to the, our county supervisor, and maybe engaging other stakeholders to reach out to them as well. County staff has scheduled the revised agreement to be approved by their board, I think at the end of July. So we can also continue to oppose by showing up at the meeting and voicing our concerns to the county supervisor, and hope that they agree with us and, you know, honor the original agreement rather than a revision. We can also mobilize stakeholders to kind of join us at that meeting and perhaps put pressure on the board. Another item we can use as part of the continuation to oppose that language is to try arbitration or mediation. The downside to that is it can delay the annexation process. And, you know, I know at this point, you know, the local realtor that's been promoting the properties that are for sale has really been stating that there's some real good potential for buyers for uses in the industrial park. And to talk about, you know, arbitration and mediation process, I think Kimberly Hood was going to say a couple items on that.
Thanks, Chris. So there is a procedure under the Revenue and Taxation Code, the provision that applies to the sale, the sharing of the property taxes. So when you do an annexation application like this, LAFCO obviously requires a tax sharing agreement. It's specific to property taxes. But obviously, if you can't reach agreement on the property, on the sales tax and the TOT, then the property tax also gets hung up in that process as you negotiate the sharing of all of those. then the property tax also gets hung up in that process as you negotiate the sharing of all of those. There is a, it's actually a mandatory provision under Revenue and Taxation Code provisions that would have a three-step process, and it involves a sharing, you would retain a third-party consultant to do a financial analysis. The funding is shared in equal portions by the city and the county. It's supposed to be completed within 30 days. If you can't reach agreement based on that analysis, it then moves to mediation. You select, you're supposed to be able to select a mutually-agreeable mediator, share the costs of the mediator. Again, that's another 30-day process. If you can't reach agreement then, it then goes to arbitration. You select an independent arbitrator, but it is advisory arbitration. So the arbitrator would reach a decision, decide which option they thought was the fair and appropriate one. But the, neither party is required to accept that. It's advisory. The party that was not amenable to that solution would have to then hold a public hearing and make findings of fact as to what their concerns were with that. This, usually it is a mandatory process. We have checked, Chris was checking with LAFCO on that because of the timing in this one where we thought we had an agreement and had submitted the application. So the timing is a little different here, but it is still a process that it sounds like is available that we could also ask the county to go through and, given the annexations that are coming in the future. And now that we know this is an issue, it may be a process we still will end up in, but it is one we are looking into.
You know, so at this point, as mentioned, LAFCO will not schedule the item for board approval until we have that fully-executed agreement. Again, we just wanted to update the council on where we were and then seek direction on where to go with it. And to recap, we really have three options. I only talked about two. You know, the one is to accept the revised tax-sharing agreement and maybe fight the battle at a later date, continue to oppose, and go the route that Kimberly talked about. And the other is really dropping annexations altogether. Now, I'm not sure the last is, you know, viable option, but it is there. So, you know, that would conclude staff presentation, and we'll gladly answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any public comment? Oh, yeah.
I was just going to ask a question. Chris, did the county supply any statistical data to support their position that we underfund whatever the courts or court system?
No. In fact, the past few weeks, I've been reaching out to them to try to get some info and have not been able to get numbers.
They haven't been able to or just have not done it?
I can't say for certain, but I, the latter is certainly true, that they have not. So I assume they could not put that data together and did not have it. But that was, would have been an assumption on my part.
Any further questions?
They could just switch the agreement.
So they're making a decision basically on a wag?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, well, the response I would get is that, you know, they, they pool their money, you know, sales tax, property tax into the general fund, and then the general fund is used to pay those. And, you know, in the larger scale, they are not, you know, they're underfunded. So they're not unlike the city where they're, you know, struggling to pay the bills at some point. So, you know, they did not provide specific data breaking down Galt property tax revenue and then Galt-specific cost related to those services.
So the property, currently, they collect 100% of the property tax, property that's been in many of those families for a very long time. They... I guess my question is, is it, they're, they're never going to develop that area. They're not going to do anything. It's outside of their service boundaries. Their general plan says that they would never develop that. We're going to have to develop it, put the infrastructure in, do the whole issue. But they want to share in the cost of all of it. When they're probably, probably just by us annexing it, the value of the property goes up, and they're going to get 50% of that, probably equals all of what they're getting now.
They would get an increase in the revenue, and if they're talking about the courts,
that deals mainly with either commercial or residential development, not industrial. So I mean, there's no correlation in the impact of the development versus what they want.
And human services.
Well, I think they want to set the precedent now.
Industrial doesn't have cost to human services.
So we were pointing out some of those same issues to the county. And, you know, in fact, our analysis shows, you know, how, you know, we don't rely on the county for any services when it relates to development. And we are unlike all the other developed communities and cities in the county, because those cities, Sacramento, Folsom, Rancho Cordova, they rely on the county for sewer capacity. They rely on the county for joint road use. So the coordination and the effort from the county is much greater when it comes to development in those communities. For Galt, there's absolutely none. We are literally on an island. And I think we're the only community in Stack County that has their own sewer treatment plant. So we are a full-service city unlike the other cities in the region. So, you know, we, we've had a hard time with this, and we run the emotion of what they're now asking from us. You know, to, I mean, Gene's got to calm me down sometimes, you know, make sure we don't respond with, you know, the poor emotions. But it, it's really upsetting. And having been here for a while and seeing other annexations that we've done, including the most recent Liberty Ranch Eastview, where it was a 50/50 property split, where if you look at that annexation, that's going to have more of an impact on the criminal system and the social services than an industrial annexation. But I will say, they are quick to point out that this provision will not apply unless we rezone property to include those commercial uses that we talk about. So, you know, again, for the industrial project, I don't envision, you know, this sales tax and TOT sharing to apply. But, you know, I like to quote Winston Churchill, and I'm probably paraphrasing, but if you don't fight them on the beaches, you'll be fighting them on the cities, where, you know, we, we need to hold the line now to not make it more difficult in the future.
Well, what they're, what they're trying to do now, from the sounds of it, is set a precedent here. And my question is, do we get our court back?
I'm getting amped up.
Do we get our court back? We used to have a, this used to be a courthouse. Sacramento, do we get our court back if we pay this kind of money? I mean, are police officers timed to go up there to testify and everything else? You know, I mean, we did, we did a cost analysis when they took a court away, the court away from us, and it cost us a whole lot of money.
I think that this agreement could affect us, and I defer to the city attorney. But under use tax, there are, we have industrial users that produce use tax currently, don't we? You know, Cardinal Glass was a...
You mean, sales tax?
Use tax. Use tax, not sales tax, use tax.
That I'm not familiar with.
Well, there's the, I think you're referring to, there's the transaction and use tax, which I think a lot of cities in shorthand refer to as a sales tax. So there's Bradley Burns. This is specific to the Bradley Burns.
Okay, well, maybe that's separate, but my understanding, there is a, it has been classified in the past here as a use tax from, say, Cardinal Glass. And I don't know if that is a retail and use tax or simply a use tax, but I know that they've generated.
I believe, and Chris can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we did pull some of the numbers to make sure. My memory was that when they were revising this, they were looking specific to the Bradley Burns sales tax. And so that we had checked, there is some sales tax generation that is minimal.
Minimal.
No, that, that is correct. And I, and I don't know if that would fall into the sales tax or the tax revenue generators that they have listed and defined in the definitions of the new agreement.
They probably don't know.
So if you look at, I think it's attachment two of the staff report, and it's in red. It identifies on, I think it's the...
Those transactional and use taxes levied by the city.
You know, it talks about the definitions of the tax-generating uses, and it talks about defined sales tax, defines big-box retail, single-purpose or regional tax, general land use, which is your auto dealers, your big box, your 30 contiguous acres. And then it talks about your transit occupancy tax. So it specifically defines users that will have to pay that 50/50 split of TOT or sales tax.
Well, I'm not familiar with the Bradley Burns Uniform Act is, but I, I just remember in the past, we had collected from, and it was a significant amount of money from some industrial users in the industrial park, so.
So Chris, if we chose option two, where you guys go dispute, how long would that process be?
So I think for the first part of it, and just to continue to oppose, and not signing, a lot of it would be dependent on whether or not we're successful or not. So if we know that the board, the staff is bringing the item to the county board at the end of July, we would know what the board's intention is at that point. And then we can have determination on whether or not we want to continue to oppose and go to some sort of mediation. And I don't know how long the mediation would take from there. I mean, it's kind of charting new territory for staff. But, you know, there is the potential for delay, so that is the downside to opposing. You know, and in talking to LAFCO about the issue, you know, he, you know, he was sympathetic to our cause. He's sympathetic to the county too, because the county has real issues too. I mean, you know, we, we know that, just, so we're sympathetic. But the reality is, is the county really holds the cards, because if they don't approve, we can't advance the application.
So if the county, if we didn't approve this, would it still go before the county board the end of the month, or are they going to pull it?
It's my belief, and I don't know, Gene, you could speak more to this, that their intent was to bring this to their board with or without our approval.
Their intent was to take this language to the board. I think it was July 24th is their, at that board meeting.
And which is unusual, because the past practice has always been to bring, you know, have the city approve it first.
Right.
In fact, the county, you know, originates the draft document. You know, we then negotiate and then have council sign it. It then goes back to their board, and then they approve it, and it goes on to LAFCO for complete application.
We have another, we do have one council meeting before that.
We have one more council meeting before that board meeting.
So we could actually, actually postpone this a month.
Could we actually, yeah, that's what I was going to ask. Could we, if we continued it?
If we continue it till next meeting?
Continue this item to the next meeting?
Yeah, to give us time to maybe talk with Mr. Natoli or...
And that's one of the reasons why we, you know, decided to get it on to this meeting.
I mean, is that possible if we do that?
Absolutely.
Well, what's the downside is, I mean, I guess what we're asking.
Yeah, I guess.
I think, I think one of the options that, you know, Chris talked about was, you know, having, you know, Mayor, Vice Mayor go talk to Don Natoli, maybe even other council members talk to other board members, you know, see if they even know or are aware of this item that's, you know, coming before them. And, you know, start talking to them. And then our other option is to go to the board meeting with, you know, a statement of our position and see how they vote.
Well, I know you and I had talked to Mr. Natoli about it.
Absolutely.
And he, I've not talked, followed up with him regarding that. Have you?
I have not.
So we really don't know what his response was. But I mean, Gene and I did meet with Don and talk to him about this item. And he was going to, he did, at that point, he was not aware of it, and he was going to talk to...
Well, it seems like a kind of a staff-driven policy at this point.
Yeah, he was going to talk to the board about it.
It's fully onboard.
It sounds to me like, like the county is trying to set precedent in the future now. And we're saying, if we do this, we're just going to feed into that.
Well, my understanding is that they have some of this.
We already have an agreement that this, this body approved. So we have something to stand on at this point, correct?
Well, this, this body approved in December 19th, a form of agreement that we received from the county that said everything was good, and let's move forward with that agreement. Took it to the council in good faith. The council approved it. We sent it back to the county, and then we received, you know, word, basically, hey, we're going to change, we'd like to change the language of the agreement, and that's what's before you tonight. And, you know, that's, I think, our frustration, you know, with the process, because in my opinion, it's in poor form, you know, with changing that language, you know, after I take it to the city council.
It's an internal issue.
And, you know, kind of get, get the direction. You know, I guess one of the ways you can kind of play this out is go to, you know, talk to the county board supervisors, talk to Don Natoli, go to the meeting, and see what action they take, and...
Well, and also point out that, you know, we were given an agreement that we already approved. And now staff has unilaterally made a decision to change that before it even coming to the board. I mean, that's, that's what's frustrating.
Exactly.
Yeah.
It is.
My understanding is that they have some of this language in other agreements that they do with annexations.
Yeah, and Chris was, Chris was researching that.
Yeah, so it's my understanding that they are bringing other tax-sharing agreements to that same meeting. I know Folsom is going forward, and Folsom's, their tax-sharing agreement looks just like ours. So, and the county staff were consistent. If there's one message they were consistent about sending, it was...
They were consistent.
That they wanted all the tax-sharing agreements to look the same. So they wanted no variation. But again, to me, we successfully made the case why and how Galt is different, and we are.
Well, and I just think that we, I mean, we need, we need this annexation. We need the jobs. We need the industrial park. We're out of space in our current industrial park. I mean, we need the annexation. And so there is, it becomes a real, you know, do we accept it because this is what they're doing, or do we?
I think it's worth at least a minor delay to have that discussion with the board members and maybe at the board meeting, and certainly with Don Natoli, because once the decision's made, then it's never going to change.
Yeah, right.
That will be it.
We used to put forward our concerns.
And in the next month, we can try and get into some statistics on, you know, you know, in my conversation with county staff, it was, well, you're light on, you know, cost of district attorney, cost of probation. And, you know, we try and dig into those numbers.
It'd be really great if we could see those numbers.
What are those costs? And give us some time. And we do have time, as you said, you know, up to the July 17th meeting. We can continue this item, bring it back at that meeting, you know, provide a council update with direction, you know. I can go with the mayor, you know, we go talk to Don Natoli. Maybe we can reach out to other board members as well and start talking to them and see, you know, where they're at.
And one other question. If the Board of Supes are going to move forward on this the end of July, then we're not going to, it's not going to come before LAFCO. We're not going to get a tax agreement or anything until after their meeting.
Correct.
So we're really not, so the business community knows, by just postponing this a month, we're not really holding anything up.
We are not.
And we're just giving ourselves a bit, hopefully, a slightly better or more better position, much better position in arguing our case.
Any further questions? Do we have any public comment? Do you have questions?
I was going to ask, do we need to make a motion for the continuance?
Well, I think, I'd like to take public comment before we have a motion. Do we have any public comment? Okay. No public comment?
You have one?
Good evening. My name is Julie Clark for the record. And I want to commend Mr. Oryas's division for responding to this in what I feel is the most appropriate aggressive stance. My issue is on a number of levels, and I think it seems everybody's kind of on the same page here. But I really urge caution in proceeding with this type of agreement. Number one, because of the precedent. Number two, I see a slight issue potentially. I don't know exactly how this would work. But if at some point a business were to have, generate sales tax revenue, the citizens of Galt are currently paying into the Measure R Fund, which is part of that tax. So I don't know what kind of arrangement could be made. But otherwise, we'd actually be sending our sales tax revenue to the county, which would be an additional, kind of not a very good arrangement. And the other part of it is that a city of our size, I don't know why we can't make the case for kind of an undue burden or some kind of an unreasonable expectation that we need to cooperate in this. As was mentioned already, this, the criminal justice impact is probably minimal. Social services, minimal for industrial property. So, anyway, thank you.
Just to answer your concern, Measure R is a pass-through tax. It doesn't, it's not shared with anyone. It can't be. It's an ordinance. It's a citizen's tax themselves. It's a, it's called a pass-through sales tax.
Okay.
So it's never shared.
Okay.
Unlike other sales tax where we only get 1%.
Right. So how does that work in terms of the revenue? So we pay, what is it, half a cent on every?
It always, if there was any sales tax generated, we always get that half percent, and then we get whatever.
Okay. So no matter what, we, that's not going to be, okay. Well, I guess I should finally say that my position on this is to urge caution and using our, I don't know, networking for lack of a better, you know, term, or working with our local Don Natoli supervisors and just exerting all the influence that we can to, you know, just try to negotiate a better arrangement, because I really don't see this as a good way forward. I mean, thinking about the impact of having to share property taxes in the first place seems a little concerning to me, especially, I mean, it's... seems a little concerning to me, especially, I mean, I know you've mentioned with developments like Eastview, the criminal justice aspect being handled by the county, I mean, that's definitely a huge cost savings, but just thinking about permanently losing that 50% of that revenue stream seems a little alarming, when we think about parks issues and other things that are desperately in need of funding, so, anyway.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so, do we have a motion?
I'm moved to continue this item. To the next council meeting?
I'll second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Cruz, second by Councilmember Malsen. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye. Motion passes five-o vote, so the item will be continued to the next meeting. Culture and Recreation, GALT Joint Union High School District's special events sponsorship request for fiscal year 2019. Armando?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. At, uh, the June 5th council meeting, members of the GALT, uh, high school district spoke under public comment, uh, requesting that, uh, fees be waived for the GALT and Liberty Ranch homecoming parades in fiscal year, uh, 2019. At the end of the meeting, City Council directed staff to agendize this, uh, this item for consideration. Uh, the applications were turned in, and they were part of the packet, they're asking, uh, for a $500 waiver and a cost for, uh, personnel and kind contribution, but I believe it is just for the personnel cost to cover the parade. Should you approve that? Um, last year's cost for both parades was $2,040, so that's what we'd estimate the cost for this upcoming year's parades, if you approve that. I'll take any questions, if you have any.
Any questions?
I'm just wondering, with the digital sign, could we put a notice on there for the school district, you know, remind them?
One question, if, if it is approved, then we will have to come back to the council with a budget amendment for this item.
So, it's cost of the street closures?
They're, with these, they're rolling street closures, so you have the officers that are closing the streets as the parade's going through, uh, basically, there is no public works that would be part of this parade, it would be 100% of the police department.
And they've told us next year they'll turn the application in on time?
We have them on tape, if you wanna go back and hold them to it.
Maybe we'll have a digital sign, where we can remind them about that.
Well, I, I just, I guess it's just frustrating, because you did your due diligence, you did what you were supposed to do, you sent the message to them, and, and now we're having to spend, you know, we did our part, and because they chose not to do their part, they've gotta come back and ask us for another change, so. Any further questions?
The amount requested is for both, or just one of the parades?
It is for both parades. I'm considering it, one request through the district for the two different parades, so total $2,040.
For both?
For both.
Well, I think it's important for us to continue to work well with the school district, I do think they're community events, they are a tradition in the community, um-
There's no way we can say no to this, but we could suddenly give a bad time.
I would make the motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Can you include it in the motion and bring back a budget amendment?
Yes, and bring back a budget amendment to cover the cost of it.
Which we have a consent calendar, which will pull, okay.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion, I mean-
You get two votes, dude.
Aye. Lamson?
Aye.
And Mayor Huer?
Aye, motion passes five-o vote.
Okay. Resident nonprofit organization criteria, City Clerk?
Yes, during the discussion of the Community Benefit Grant Funding Program, back in March, City Council asked staff to bring back a recommendation for a resident nonprofit organization definition or criteria. The criteria would apply to all city programs and use of facilities, the criteria would be in addition to the other eligibility requirements established by the specific program. If City Council approves the resident nonprofit organization criteria, a resolution will be brought back for adoption, um, would you like me to highlight exactly what the criteria would be? Yes? So, it, it would be organized under, um, the resident nonprofit organization would be organized under the following categories, it would be a 501(c) 3, 4, 6, and 7, or 7, I should say, um, it would, the organization would have to have a principal meeting place within the city of GALT, and would have been organized or established for a minimum of one year, preceding the request, must provide the respective, uh, meeting locations, scheduled meeting dates and times to confirm their principal meeting place, and item, uh, in addition to item two would be, must be current on their registration with the California Secretary of State and California Attorney General, and must provide a copy of their most recent IRS tax exempt determina, determination letter, including an IRS tax exempt status certification letter, and proof on nonprofit filing with the California Secretary of State.
Any questions?
This is basically a cleanup, so all our, our ordinances, uh, say the same thing.
Correct, so the summary of the existing resolutions is also included in the agenda report.
And this will not adversely affect what we've already approved?
No, it will not.
No, it'll just make all the ordinances-
I, I kinda gathered that, just, just, just wanted to get it on tape as such.
No, it does not.
Do we have any public comment? My, my only concern is that, is that, was something that, uh, Councilmember Malsen had brought forward about looking at some of the other, um, criteria of neighboring communities, and one of the things being, because, because we're asking the taxpayers within the city of GALT to help fund these things, that there was a cri, there was some requirement in the others about having a 50% membership come from, live within the city limits, and I thought that was an interesting, um, criteria that was at others, but I'm fine with this, but I just think it's, it's kind of a, uh, a thought that when we're asking the citizens to fund these things, because it is the taxpayers funding it, that, um, that at least 50% of those people funding it should, should live in the city, that's-
This is actually only defining, um, what a resident nonprofit organization is, you could include something similar to what you're requesting as one of the requirements, um, for a specific program.
Any further discussion? Do we have a motion?
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lamson, second by Vice Mayor Cruz. Roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye, motion passes five-o vote.
Next item, Measure R Independent Citizens Oversight Committee Appointment?
Yes, um, staff is asking you to review the application and consider an appointment to the vacant position on the Measure R Citizens Oversight Committee, we see, um, one application from Kathleen Amos, which you have included in your packet.
Ms. Amos was on the original, uh, committee, the original group that, uh, helped pass Measure R, was a-
Yes, she was.
This is also an appointment that's done by the entire council, so I'll need-
I would move to point-
I'll second. Motion by Councilmember, Councilmember Campion, second by Mayor Huer, call for the vote. Roll call?
Vice Mayor Cruz?
Aye.
Councilmember Malsen?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lamson?
Aye.
Mayor Huer?
Aye, motion passes five-o vote.
I have one more last item, is to remind, uh, the community that the meeting on July 3rd has been canceled.
So, the next regular meeting is?
July 17th. July 17th.
It's here somewhere.
Comments by staff? Mark?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm doing my best to disrupt the traffic out there on Lincoln.
They're doing it well, too.
Thank you.
Mission accomplished.
It was a detour weekend.
Yes, it was, and, uh, hopefully, we're past that point. We still have a lot of items to do out there, we have, uh, A Street from the interchange all the way to the, uh, to the western, uh, city limits is going to get a treatment, pavement treatment, striping and such, the rest of Lincoln out to, from A Street to Pringle will be done, uh, all of this about next two weeks, we're trying to get it done within the next week, by next Tuesday, um, no, uh, there'll be limited detours, mostly on the smaller side roads, but, uh, Lincoln will have a, a drive-through, you know, you'll be able to go either direction, and same with A Street, we're just gonna kind of move traffic, little bit of delays and stuff that are gonna occur, um, but we are, um, we're looking at, as far as the street and the concrete work, next two weeks or less will be completed by then. Then we're gonna have delay for a, a couple of weeks before we can start doing the permanent striping, 'cause you gotta let everything set up, um, for a period of, uh, two to four weeks, depending on the type of striping that we're putting down, so we're getting real close to that, uh, that point, and, uh, and we're on schedule, under budget, moving right along, might see some oil that's gonna come off, a couple of areas that we have, we'll be cleaning that up, um, and some of it's gonna fade away with time, uh, time being the next couple of weeks and so, but, but we do have, uh, some construction material that will, little bit of dust, little things going on, Second Street and First Street got a lot of infill sidewalks, and that's going on at this time, and some really nice things out there, you know, that it's really starting to look, look good, and I'll try to avoid any more downtown projects for a while, so. Till December, right? We have a- Right.
Well, I really appreciate the weekly updates, getting the weekly updates, so, and I know that anyone in the community that would like those can receive those also, so it's really great to be able to, to see each week what's the, the progress being made, they're doing a great job, it's really progressing quickly, so, thank you, Mark. Chris?
Uh, one quick item, uh, the Planning Commission last week recommended approval of the South Sacramento Habitat Conservation Plan, uh, the group was in presenting to the county for approval, not only of the plan, but also of the environmental documents. Uh, Planning Commission did a great job, I mean, it was a robust discussion on, uh, fees and costs, as well as, uh, you know, the programs associated with, uh, the plan. We're expecting to bring it to council after it goes to the county board of supervisors, and I'm thinking the end of August, uh, for approval, so, it's kind of an exciting time, we're actually, uh, getting really close, you know, to having that plan finally approved.
A meeting was scheduled for the board, but then it was canceled, and have you heard anything more?
Uh, no, I, no, I'm not aware of how that went.
Emily? Chief?
I have nothing, uh, this week.
Gene?
I have nothing further, thank you.
Armando?
I'd like to remind everybody about the IDC, it's coming up, June 30th, uh, we have the Ton Memorial Run that starts at 8 o'clock, our IDC Parade at 9:30, our Veterans Field Music Kid Zone at 6 o'clock, and with the help of, uh, Sean Farmer, we're gonna add a Touch a Tank event, uh, the, the military vehicles that you'll see in the parade will be there onsite, and kids will be able to climb them, uh, sit inside them, and, uh, they'll get a little history lesson from the people, uh, that will be, um, standing by, and then fireworks at 9:30, this year, if you download the J&amp;M Display app, you pull up our event, and you can have music with the fireworks, so, it's gonna be a nice event, hope to see you guys in the parade, and, um, that's about it.
Looking forward to it. Cora?
Mayor, I actually do have one thing, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, Friday is the Special Olympics Torch Run, and, uh, for those that don't know, the flame that, uh, is lit, is final, this final destination is at UC Davis for the Games, uh, GALT Police Department lights it, the eternal flame, the final resting place, um, for Kevin Ton, and then it's moved from here to, or from Citrus Heights over to Elk Grove, where that torch is passed on to, to runners from Elk Grove, and it makes it all the way up to the Capitol where there's a presentation, um, and then following that, it's run across the Causeway, and then over to UC Davis, uh, so we initiate that flame that, uh, makes the final place where the, uh, Chief of Police of, uh, UC Davis will light the, uh, big flame at the, uh, Games, so.
Thank you.
And Chief, did I see you on TV before I came?
Yes.
I did.
I was on TV, I was at the Capitol today, um, there's a new coalition for the state, to, uh, help with the mental illness and the, uh, behavioral issues, uh, that's, it's new, groundbreaking, and so I was representing California Police Chiefs today, and, uh, they asked me to fill in for one of the other chiefs to, uh, read a statement for Cal Chief, so I did.
Kurt?
Nothing.
Paige? Tom?
Then you wanna, if anybody wants to be the council member, I, I'll be on, in the Ton Run, uh, last.
Race a council member.
Mark?
I walk, I, I can't run, my knees.
Donna, anything else? Okay, mediate earned, thank you.